Okay, good evening everyone. My name is Jim Ostrowski and I work for Eagles Environmental Support Division. Welcome to our public hearing tonight for submission for STS Hydropower LLC. We've got about thirty-six people logged in at the moment and I'm sure there will be a few more people that'll log on as we get started. I'm just gonna run over a few housekeeping things and agenda for tonight and then we'll kick things off. So basically, the way tonight's evening is gonna work is going to be that we'll provide some introductory information for you. We've got it split up into an information session that'll take us through about six-thirty or so. And information sessions really informal, so we'll do some introductory information, let the applicant present their presentation, do a little Q and A, and then at about six-thirty, we'll start the official public hearing. And so there's two distinct parts this meeting, the first part being the information session where it's informal and got some time for some Q and A, some presentations. The second half, second part is the official hearing and that's where we're gonna hear your comments. And that part of the meeting is very formal. We'll read off an information, like an official statement and we'll open up the lines for you to submit your official comments. It's important you know the difference between a question and a comment, so the first part is for questions that you might have, the second half is for comments, so if you wanna make a comment on a project or application, what we're talking about tonight, that's when you wanna make it is during the second part and I'll make sure I announce it so you know when that's going to be. So that's how tonight's works. For those of you first time on, it's kind of a new experience, I know, for a lot of you, but don't worry, we'll walk you through it and make sure everything works okay. In terms of the setup and the housekeeping, all lines remain muted for now, so you'll see your lines muted and you can't talk at the moment. If you have a question during the Q and A, you can type your question in the question box and we'll get to as many as we can. We are recording this meeting, like I said, and we'll post it on our YouTube channel and it should be available in the next few days. We'll send a link to you all when it is available, so you have all those to you. Now, when it comes time for the public comment, we will allow you to unmute your mic and so you will have a little button that'll pop up to allow you to unmute your mic when we call your name and I'll explain how that works a little bit later. So we do have some staff with us today from our Water Resources Division and I'll let them introduce themselves, so Derek and Kyle, you guys wanna come on?
Hey, everybody. Derek Carrollton, Water Resources Division, the hearings officer for tonight.
I'm Kyle Alexander, I'm the district supervisor in the Water Resources Division in the Kalamazoo District Office. Thanks everybody for being here.
Alright, thanks guys and just wanna remind you that we are all working remotely, so we're all working from our houses around Michigan, so that's where we're coming to you from, just like you. Before we kick it over to our applicants, I do want to let Derek kind of give a little synopsis of, you know, the scope of this meeting and why we're here tonight. So Derek, I'll let you take it over for a minute here.
Okay, thanks Jim. So we're gonna get into this in more detail in a little bit when I go through basically a script template describing the exact work. But this is not, a little bit of unusual public hearing. So as far as a timeline in the background, the work, the application that was applied for was for dredging work up near the dam and then for temporary structures associated with replacing two gates at the dam. All this work is required so that the impoundment can be refilled, basically returned to normal run-of-river kind of conditions. So once the permit, once the public notice went out for the permit, normally we wait twenty days, we accept public comments. In this, in this case, the statute allows us to issue an emergency or conditional permit before that twenty days expires. So we did that October twenty-third, just a couple of days after the public notice. So it's just important to note that, and I think most or if not all of you are aware, the hearing is not on a project that we're considering issuing a permit on, but when actually on a project that we've already issued an emergency or a conditional permit, we're still gonna accept public comments, go through the hearing, but the work is basically in process, so just keep that in mind. We'll go through a little bit more technical details of exactly what the work is. And when I get into the script, you're gonna hear me referring to everything as if it has not been done yet, obviously it's in progress, but that's my, that's kind of the, I guess, the background preamble, Jim, in terms of how it's a little bit different than a regular hearing and just the basics of the project, so.
Okay, thanks Derek. At this point, what we're going to do is we're gonna allow the applicants to come up and provide a presentation, so I'm going to unmute the applicants, David Fox and Jody Smet, so just a moment, David and Jody, I'm gonna unmute your lines, so hang in there with me. So Jody, you should be able to talk, you can unmute your line, and David.
Yes, good evening, this is Jody Smet with STS Hydropower.
Hi, Jody, and David, you there?
Yes, I'm here, good evening, everyone.
Hello, I'm gonna bring up your guys' slides, I have them here. And so I'll control the slides, can you see your slide there, Morrow Dam Hydroelectric?
Yes, I can, thanks.
Alright, so I don't know how, whoever wants to talk, when you wanna go next slide, just tell me and I'll flip it for you. So I'll let you take it away, you got about ten minutes.
Okay, I'll do my best, thanks Jim. Again, my name is David Fox, I'm a Director of Licensing and Compliance for STS Hydropower. Happy to have the opportunity to talk to everyone this evening. Let's go on to the next slide here, Jim. Okay, here's a quick overview of the information I'm gonna be covering this evening. Although the focus tonight is on the conditional permit itself, I I'm guessing, understand that many of you may be here because of very valid concerns related to the overall impact of the gate replacement project on the Kalamazoo River. We acknowledge those concerns and I plan to use some of my time this evening to update you on the status of the project and the efforts we're taking to address any associated impacts with the project. So let's move on to the next slide here, Jim. So, quick bit of background on the Morrow Dam hydroelectric project to get going. It's a hydroelectric generating dam constructed in nineteen forty-one, it has four spillway bays, two of those bays house turbine generator units and two house spillway tinner gates, each gate has a approximate discharge capacity of four thousand CFS and we use those gates to to regulate reservoir elevations and downstream discharge flows. It's important to note that the dam itself is classified by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission as a high hazard potential structure. That means that failure or misoperation will likely cause loss of human life. But the dam is classified as high hazard potential, the spillway gates are also classified as category one, which is type of gate with the most severe consequences in the event of a problem. So let's move on to the next one. Thanks. So a bit of background here on how we find ourselves in this situation. We took over operation of this facility in twenty seventeen. As part of our corporate-wide dam safety program, we conducted a detailed engineering inspection of both spillway gates in October twenty nineteen and our engineers observed significant deterioration. And with our dam safety team, we determined that immediate repair was necessary and the gates in their current condition really posed an unacceptable dam safety risk. So at that point, we consulted with Michigan DNR, Eagle, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, environmental and dam safety folks and initiated a controlled emergency drawdown and the intent of the drawdown was to relieve pressure on the weakened gates and totally eliminate the risk of a dam safety incident. When we got the reservoir drawn down, we got a much closer look at the state of the gates. And the condition was quite alarming and we determined that these were not things that could be repaired. In our view, the optimal, optimal long-term dam safety solution for us and all stakeholders involved was a complete replacement. Unfortunately, replacement is a much longer process than repair, we had to fully engineering design new gates, we had to solicit and obtain regulatory approval from FERC dam safety personnel and then we had to go out and fabricate custom gates off-site. So because we had to replace rather than repair, our drawdown timeframe went from a couple of months to just over a year at this point. While we were drawing the reservoir down, we consulted with Michigan Eagle, DNR and the FERC and then ended up implementing a partial drawdown of nine feet rather than full drawdown of fourteen feet. We also conducted the drawdown at a very slow controlled rate in order to minimize potential sediment transport issues. Next slide. So that's how we got into the situation. Now, moving on to the topic at hand, the permit and the activities that the permit authorizes, there's really three components to our permit. First is to remove approximately six hundred cubic yards of material that was situated immediately upstream of the two hydro generating unit bays. And the reason we need to do this was because we have to close the spillway gates at certain times during the construction sequence in order to conduct diving work to allow the gates to be replaced and without being able to discharge water through the unit bays, which were being blocked by sediment, we would have to cut off pretty much all flow to the river downstream. Second component of the permit is to install a custom fabricated bulkhead de-watering system upstream and downstream of the spillway gates that would allow us to remove the existing damaged gates and install the newly fabricated gates. The third component of the permit is three run-of-river flow discharge reduction modifications. During three periods of construction sequence, we need to cut off flow to the gates in order to safely work upstream of the structure. You have divers in the water and it's just, it's not feasible from a worker's safety perspective to be discharging water through these gates while folks are in the water. So those are the three components of the permit. Next slide. As part of the permit, we worked with our external environmental consulting team and the resource agencies to develop a targeted mitigation plan to control any any environmental impacts associated with the permitted work. Three components of the plan, number one is a targeted upstream and downstream sediment control measures. For the most part, these are sediment containment currents shown in the pictures to the left. Second component of the plan is a onsite environmental professional conducting monitoring of the permitted activities and the river downstream to ensure that in the event that we do see an impact to the resource, we can quickly stop work and implement any appropriate mitigation measures. Finally, we've developed a specific protocol for the three run-of-river modification periods that I mentioned earlier. And the intent of this protocol is to gradually or gently ramp down our discharges, do our work and then gradually increase flows and return to normal discharge levels. And the intent of that procedure is to minimize any impacts to the downstream resource resulting from the flow changes. Okay, let's move on to the next slide. Okay, quick overview of where we're at on the permitted work sequences. We've completed all dredging work, that was done on November second. Detected no material increases in turbidity levels. We've also completed the first and second run-of-river modifications, first was done on November fourth, second was done a couple of weeks later on the nineteenth. During both sequences, the work went relatively smoothly and we were able to discharge more than we originally expected in the range of two hundred seventy to four hundred sixty CFS compared to the originally expected rate of a hundred CFS. Third run-of-river modification is currently scheduled for next week, we have a fair amount of work to do between now and then, but we'll certainly keep all stakeholders informed when that's gonna occur as we get a little bit closer to the scheduled date. Next slide. Okay, so I'm gonna change gears here a little bit and talk briefly about the, our efforts since this summer to get a handle on and manage ongoing sediment transport issues resulting from the drawn-down reservoir. We've worked in consultation with Michigan Eagle and Michigan DNR and more recently the EPA to implement an adaptive management approach to quickly get out there, identify sources and put in place appropriate mitigation measures. Today, we've installed just over eight thousand feet of containment. Primarily consists of shoreline containment where we have about six thousand feet and also consists of about twenty-five hundred feet of permeable containment checks in the waterway. At the same time, we've deployed a real-time internet-based turbidity monitoring system consisting of three monitoring sensors. One's a background station upstream of the reservoir, one's just upstream of the reservoir and one's immediately downstream. And we use that to overall monitor the situation and also to evaluate the performance of the turbidity mitigation measures we've put in place. And we're seeing a clear downward trend in Site Three, which is downstream of the dam since August, which suggests that our turbidity and sediment transport measures we've put in place are having some positive benefit to the transport issue.
Hey, David, this is Jim, just interrupting here.
Yeah.
You're at over ten minutes now, so if you can kind of wrap it up.
Thanks, okay, next slide. Okay, wrapping up here, at the same time, we're conducting a investigation assessment of the downstream impact, goal is to assess the volume, location, depth and composition of sediments. We're doing this as a phased approach, we're currently implementing Phase One, which is a effort to map the sediments through bathimetry and other methods and also to sample the sediments for physical characteristics and to analyze for targeted chemical constituents. We'll take that information and use that to design a second phase investigation next year. And ultimately, these two phases will be used to design a sediment management strategy and approach to address any impacts. Next slide. Okay, so quick overview, next steps, we finished up Gate Three, sorry, Gate Four, we're in the process of replacing Gate Three. Everything's on schedule. As soon as these things are replaced, we'll begin the refill and start returning the project to normal operations. Expect that's gonna be over a thirty to sixty day period. And again, we're moving forward actively, performing the Phase One field investigation. And we'll get results in January, so, you know, we'll continue to keep everyone updated on the status of the project and you know, appreciate everyone's time this evening, happy to field questions via email. There's my address, questions, comments are welcome and if you wanna be added to our stakeholder list, please also email me. Appreciate everyone's time, sorry, I went a couple of minutes over there.
Alright, thanks David. Yeah, so we do have a few minutes for questions, if somebody hasn't, just wanna remind people, this is kind of our informal part of our meeting tonight, so hold on, I'm gonna just bring up my other slideshow here, so stand by. There we go, so if you have a question, you can type it in the question box, you can click the raise hand icon. There's a few people on the phone I can see, so if you're on the phone, you have a question, you can type star nine. Hit star nine, we'll call in your name. So I'm looking at our board here, also we got a question from Kenneth. Kenneth, I'm gonna mute your lines, you can go ahead and you should see something pop up to unmute and you can ask your question, go ahead.
Okay, well, I'll also be making a more formal comment, but my question relates to the formal comment I will make and that is I do not see any information about monitoring or mediation efforts very far downstream or very far into the future. The sediments that were mobilized have gone almost certainly, at least up to the city of Allegan, I don't know that it's gone past the city of Allegan Dam, but I believe it's fairly clear that those sediments have gone downstream as far as Allegan and I guess I would say that it is up to Eagle and STS to prove me wrong on this because there's an awful lot of public observation that that's the case and some testing as well. And so, you know, I would want to know what is in the current plans or what will be imposed upon future plans to actually do testing and monitoring, observational studies, polling, whatever is necessary. Habitat disruption, loss of breeding ground, damage to various kinds of plants and animal life downstream. Well downstream, as far as necessary, and that means to me at least up to the city of Allegan. And then the follow-up, which is an exact corollary is, how long is the monitoring going to go on? How much will there be a requirement in place in the permit to actually not only monitor but to remediate and restore any of the damages to the environment which occur well downstream? And how long will this be in place? Will there be some kind of, I don't know, escrow damage deposit, so to speak, that's going to guarantee performance? So that's my question.
Okay, yeah, thanks Kenneth, so I'm gonna let Kyle and Derek kind of take it.
Yeah, I think there were a lot of questions there and I don't think we can begin to answer all of them tonight, but Derek and David maybe can speak more specifically to the requirements that were put in place as part of the permitted work. I don't know, Derek, if you wanna speak to that or David.
Yeah, I mean, for the permit that was issued, there was, basically, there was a monitoring mitigation plan to during the dredging, during the flow change periods to track turbidity, to, you know, again, third-party tracking of turbidity with some flexibility built in, so it could be somewhat adaptive. As far as the rest of the questions, there was a lot in there. Some of these things, so in terms of the scope of the downstream, I think right now the focus with the Phase One is more limited to downstream of the dam and the focus there is a time, kind of a temporal span of wanting to catch what is there now knowing that when the impoundment is refilled, some of those sediments could be mobilized and probably will be mobilized. But I think long-term, you know, in terms of how far downstream, where are they and what will be done in the future? That's not something we have fully defined to be at this point, but we're certainly aware from the public, from everything we've heard, that there've been with, you know, impacts far downstream in terms of recreation, in terms of water quality and all that. Trying to, how long will, the question is how long will monitoring go on? Remediation and restoration, those are the types of things that are not gonna be dealt with through a permitting process, probably more likely through a compliance enforcement process. And, you know, that's a whole other thing, but, you know, we're having, we've started those discussions now, so. And so I don't know how much, I think hopefully that addresses some of the questions.
But yeah. We got quite a few more that have come in too, so I guess I'll probably just keep it at that, if you have more detailed questions, I'll put Derek's email up at the end tonight, so if you can, if you wanna email Derek, you can do that. This person on my question box here is asking, will PCBs be measured in the sediments that are discharged?
Yes.
Okay, good. Another person we have got saying, asking, did you have permits from Eagle before the process started back in twenty nineteen? You make it sound like you had all the approval from the beginning, if so, how did all the sediment get released? So Derek, you wanna talk about permitting?
Yeah, so the context of the drawdown itself, there were no, there were no permits at the time of the drawdown, which began October thirty-first, November first. There were no permits for the drawdown in place. You know, so Eagle Creek, there is, so it's like, there is an exemption for drawdowns for federal dams like this licensed through FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Eagle Creek's position was that the drawdown is conducted in line with that exemption, that meeting that exemption. Our position that it was not, it required consultation upfront, some communication exchange opportunity for some feedback and review, so there was not a permit issue. So we notified, you know, Eagle Creek, STS Hydropower, that the work was done, you know, without a permit and not meeting exemption, it was a violation, so. That's the background on the drawdown, there was, as David said, there was consultation with the agencies concurrently during the drawdown and has been throughout the process, but when it started, it was not, the drawdown was not done under an Eagle permit and it was our position that a permit was required.
Okay. This person's asking, do you have any sediment sampling results to share this evening? I don't think we have any this evening, but do you guys wanna address that?
We don't have any sediment results to share this evening, no.
Our field team is mobilized today and sediment sampling will start tomorrow. Couple of weekly time to get laboratory results, so we expect results in January.
Okay. Another question, person's asking, given the illegal sediment discharge, should Eagle seek a consent decree to support management of future sediment deposition in the Morrow Reservoir? For example, financing landscape management grants in the watershed?
Yeah, in short, that's really not something we're gonna get into tonight, like Derek stated earlier, we are working with David and STS on the violations that Eagle has communicated to them and will be, I'm sure, working with them to resolve those for the next several months.
Okay. Just checking here, see if any more questions, I think we addressed the sedimentation questions. Like I said, if you guys got more questions, we'll put up Derek's email at the end, you'll be able to contact Derek directly for more details and other things, but it is six-thirty, so it's good timing because we need to move on to the next part of our evening, so I wanna thank David and Jody for being on and need to move on to the next part of our evening. So I want to thank David and Jody for being on, um, and doing your presentation. Thanks, guys. So just gonna make a couple of arrangements here. Stand by with me here. All right, there we go. Okay, so, um, I'm going to bring this up a little bit later. Uh, but just want to remind people that right now we're going to move into the official public hearing. Derek's going to read off a hearing statement in just a moment, but at this point, what we're going to be doing is listening to your comments and basically we won't be responding. We'll just be listening into your comments. Uh, if you, tonight's not the only time you can make a comment. Uh, in a minute, I'm going to put up a screen that'll show other ways you can make a comment. So if you don't feel comfortable making comments tonight, you can email us or submit your comments in my waters and I'll put those up there in just a moment. So, uh, yeah, let's kick off the official hearing part of this tonight then. So Eric, go ahead or Derek, go ahead and, uh, you can read off the hearing statement.
Okay, thanks, Jim. All right, let me get this up here. So again, folks, just, um, bear with me. Um, I'm reading from a template script. Um, so, and again, the context, keep in mind, a lot of this is, this is, um, I didn't go through and change everything. A lot of it's worded as if the, the project is yet to happen. Um, keep in mind what I'm reading off the, the, um, the proposed work is essentially already been approved. So, um, so, uh, we'll get started with that. Um, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Derek Haraldson. I'm the district representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, or Eagle. I will be serving as the hearing officer for this public hearing on Eagle submission number HP2 ERTF With me tonight is Kyle Alexander, Kalamazoo District Supervisor and Jim Ostrowski Supervisor in the Training and Outreach Unit. Uh, to describe how this is going to work tonight, I will begin with some background information about why we are here. Um, I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will be then time for you to provide comments and we will spend the majority of the time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will provide a short summary and closing. So by way of background information, the Water Resource Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks and building in a designated critical sand dune area, wetland or floodplain. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Public Act 451 of 1994 as amended, uh, which I will refer to simply as Act 451. So we are here tonight because STS Hydro Power LLC has proposed again to dredge and install temporary structures in order to replace two tainter gates on the Morrow Dam. And again, um, please note that the public notice of the application was issued on October 20th. Uh, and the conditional permit authorizing the work was issued on October 23rd. And this was to expedite completion of the work, um, and re-empoundment of Morrow Lake. So the work that was proposed and permitted, um, was to dredge to approximately 592 cubic yards of material, uh, to be mechanically dredged from the concrete apron at the inlets of Bay One and Bay Two and along the left wing wall. Um, a T-shaped concrete barrier will be placed by crane and divers on the concrete apron adjacent to the pier and between gates three and four. An upstream copper dam consisting of slots mounted to the bay piers in five concrete bulkhead sections will be constructed on the upstream concrete apron. And the downstream bulkhead copper dam consisting of concrete form panels will be placed within the downstream tailwater end of each bay in order to facilitate the removal and replacement of tainter gates three and four. Upstream and downstream copperhead bulkheads will be installed first in Bay Four when gate four has been removed and replaced as it has currently. The upstream and downstream copperdam bulkheads will be moved to Bay Three. During the proposed gate replacement activities, run of river flow will be maintained through the adjacent oper- operational gate in the powerhouse bays one and two, except to provide for diver safety during the three flow reduction periods for the insulation, um, adjustment and removal of the temporary barrier. Anticipated discharge will be between 80 to 120 CFS. Um, as you may have noted here during, uh, David's presentation, um, the actual CFS during those first two were around 300, so much higher than expected. Um, all dredging material are to be dewatered and placed on uplands on site and then disposed of in a landfill. So in order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria set by Part 301 Inland Lakes and Streams of Act 451. When reviewing a permit, uh, an application for permit under the provisions of Part 301 of Act 451, Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by a section 301 of six of Part 301. Uh, the first is that the department shall issue a permit if it finds that the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or riparian rights. And secondly, the department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy any of the waters or other natural resources of the state. Furthermore, Rule 281.814 of the Administrative Rules for Part 301 requires that all existing and potential adverse environmental effects shall be determined and the department shall not grant a permit unless the department determines both of the following. The first is that the adverse impacts to the public trust, riparian rights and the environment will be minimal. And second, that a feasible and prudent alternative is not available. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the project an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue the permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that we must use in making a decision. Um, some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that by law, Eagle is not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there is widespread, um, support or opposition. So in just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments. Um, but before that, I need to mention that the notice of this public hearing was published in the November 17th edition of the Kalamazoo Gazette. So as we discussed at the beginning, um, of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, um, click on the question box and I don't know how some, I don't know that that's really going to be relevant right now. It's the directions about comments. Um, but first, the applicant has already, um, I've already, I'm sorry, I'll go back over that one more time. The instructions are going to be a little bit different, but essentially, um, if you have a comment, click, type it into the Q and A, um, box. If you'd like to make a comment, we'll go through the list of those who have said that. Um, and generally we're going to follow these steps. First, the consultant set an opportunity or the, um, the applicant permit is had a chance to describe the project. Um, next, I will call on those or Jim will call on those who has indicated, um, that they would like to speak. Um, and then as a reminder, if you're participating in the hearing via telephone only, um, you, you will only be able to provide comments during the, uh, hearing comment period. So, and you can submit those comments to me via email or through my waters. Um, if you have any written comments or materials to present, again, you can email them to me or can provide those, uh, upload those to my waters. Um, when we have all the comments through, uh, we will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement or a comment. When your name is called, on your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Uh, each person will be given three minutes to make their comments. Um, either Jim or I will indicate when you, when time's up or when you're almost out of time. Uh, please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. Um, and if need be, we'll let you know when time is up. So I ask that we all be courteous, um, and respectful to one another tonight. Only one person should be speaking at a time. Uh, please do not interrupt the speaker. I don't know that you can really do that with the mute button, but, uh, just recognize that Eagle staff um, is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments, um, on the project and for us to listen to those comments. So again, as Jim said, the hearing is being recorded. Um, your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the project. Um, the public comment period for this hearing is open for 10 days from the date of this hearing ending on December 11th. And any additional information and comments, uh, submitted in writing during the 10-day public comment period um, can be, uh, will be considered. And any additional comments can be submitted to me. My email address is HaroldsonD@michigan.gov. There'll be some slides that show that later. And then, um, following the close of the public comment period normally within wait, we would make a decision. However, we've obviously already made that decision, um, and we can provide, there'll be links to where you can, um, look and find an information on my waters basically. Um, so thanks everybody for their attention, bearing with me, uh, getting through that statement. Um, we will now begin going through the, the names of those folks that have indicated that they'd like to make a comment or statement.
All right. Thanks, Derek. So, um, yeah, everybody. So now it's time to take the official comments from people and I'm just going to bring up my screen here. Went to sleep, so just got to bring it back up. Um, so yeah, we had, when people, if they wanted to, they could register to attend this hearing and there was a question on there asked if you wanted to make a comment. So a couple of people did say they wanted to make a comment, so we're going to go over those, go through those people first. There's, there's just two of them. Then after go through those two, I will ask if anybody else wants to make a comment. And just to remind you that if you want to make a comment, uh, you should click the raise hand icon and we will call your name and unmute your microphone. All right. So I'm looking at my list of people who I have who already stated they want to make a comment. The first person I have is, uh, Cheryl Vosberg. So Cheryl Vosberg is here tonight. I'm going to allow you to talk and just want to remind you, uh, you have about three minutes. And to make sure you repeat your name and any organization with. So Cheryl, are you there?
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good. So go ahead.
All right. My name is Cheryl Vosberg. I'm the Executive Director of the Kalamazoo River Watershed Council. I'm going to be making a statement on behalf of our Board of Directors. It is the mission of the Kalamazoo River Watershed Council to restore and protect the health of the Kalamazoo River, its tributaries and its watershed by collaborating with the community, government agencies, local officials and businesses. The Kalamazoo River Watershed Council is an impartial, science-based, educational and informational advocate for the Kalamazoo River. On behalf of the Kalamazoo River Watershed Council Board of Directors and the collaborators that we represent, we want to express our deep concerns for the impacts on the Kalamazoo River resulting from the Morrow Lake drawdown. We believe that this degree of damage was predictable and could have been avoided had appropriate measures been taken to protect the river. In light of the massive downstream release of sediments that has been allowed to occur, occur, we encourage our state and where appropriate federal regulatory agencies to pursue responsible party accountability to mitigate the impacts of the sediment release. In addition, we expect that regulatory procedures will be reviewed and improved to avoid future environmental tragedies arising from mismanagement of dams in the Kalamazoo River system and elsewhere. While much of the environmental damage has likely already occurred, impacts on fish and wildlife habitat will continue through the refilling of the impoundment, the recovery of sediments already redeposited downstream from the dam and the continued redistribution of those sediments with potential adverse impacts in new areas of the river. The Kalamazoo River Watershed Council offers our assistance and support for assessment and restoration initiatives moving forward. We want to be part of the solution. With regard to damage assessment, we specifically want to see physical characterization, quantification of sediment deposition and redistribution, chemical characterization of sediment deposits and water quality with particular attention to the possibility of remobilization of legacy contaminants, comprehensive assessment of fish and wildlife impacts, evaluation of the potential long-term chan- changes in chat, river channel geomorphology caused by sediment deposition. Based on the results of the damage assessment, we specifically want to see the following restoration outcomes. Dredging where prudent to restore pre-drawdown geomorphology, habitat restoration with improvements extended beyond predown conditions, pre-drawdown con- conditions to atone for short and long-term habitat destruction, ongoing long-term monitoring to continue to assess the effectiveness of the restoration initiatives. We have appreciated the efforts by the responsible party and state regulatory agencies to keep the community informed and to offer opportunities to provide input. But we all also recognize the challenges posed by mitigation and restoration and the commitment by responsible parties and regulators to meet these challenges is now paramount. It is our desire to partner with and support all parties in the comprehensive assessment, mitigation and restoration of the Kalamazoo River.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. All right. I'm going to go to my next person, uh, Kenneth Cornheiser. Kenneth, I'm going to find your name here. There you are, and allow you to talk. So you should be able to unmute your mic. Good. Go ahead. Again, repeat your name and any, and you can make a comment.
Okay, my name is Kenneth Cornheiser. I am a member of the Kalamazoo River Watershed Council Board, but I am speaking as an individual. I paddle on the Kalamazoo River dozens of times every year and have done so for the past 20 years and I hope to do so for the next 20 years. I definitely want to say that I mean no disrespect to anybody at all. Um, as a member of the Kalamazoo River Watershed Council and many other environmental groups in the area, I have had frequent interactions with Eagle, including the individuals who are taking part in this public hearing today. And I appreciate the, the work and talent, the efforts that people have, have exerted and, uh, and, and have respect for them. I'd also say that once this became a matter of public attention at this spring and I started having interactions with, um, STS at Eagle Creek that they have been very responsive and have been very forthcoming and, and information. Okay. However, having given those provisos, I would also say that I believe that there have been, um, lapses on the part of STS and, and due diligence. There have been delays that were undertaken without communications about those delays without modifications of the plans being made, a matter of public record and, uh, and regulation and without appropriate mitigation efforts. And, and frankly, there have been some failures of oversight that, that's behind us now. But it has resulted in, to use the language that we heard earlier, violations of the public trust, violations of, uh, riparian rights of the citizens who use the Kalamazoo River and live along the shoreline and fish in the river. And there have been adverse environmental effects. Those, those are done. Those, those are already in place. And, and so what my comment really is about is making sure that there is adequate attention given to the downstream effects that fairly clearly go well downstream past the point of, of where we saw that there was monitoring just downstream of the dam, um, you know, probably for, I'm not sure the exact river miles, but 30 miles or so downstream from that dam. And we know that there have been short-term environmental effects and habitat damage and, 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 uh, you know, it adverse effects on the wildlife. Um, and we don't know what the long-term effects are going to be. And in this permit, I don't see a performance guarantee that, that attention is going to be paid, that the monitoring downstream and well into the future will be undertaken. And, and that the, the, the necessary oversight will, will take place. I don't question anybody, but and and that the the necessary oversight will will take place. I don't question anybody, but you know, it's what's in the legal document that potentially determines what actually happens. And I would hope that these kinds of things go into the actual permit rather than just maybe dealt with later in terms of the violations that have taken place. And the 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 enforcement of of actions in the violation that potentially will be contested and may have problems in in coming to fruition. So that is my my statement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, that's all the people that initially said they want to make a statement. Now we have a few people with their hands raised to make a statement and I'm gonna go through you all and call on you. Just to remind you, if you want to make a statement tonight, you can just click the raise hand icon and I'll call on you and unmute your microphone. So first person with their hand up looks like Mark Ludwig. Mark, you there?
Good evening, folks.
Okay, go ahead. Repeat your name, any association with, and you have three minutes, sir.
My name is Mark Ludwig. Among other things, I'm a board member of the Alligan Conservation District for which we used to call them soil conservation districts and there's a good reason for that because soil is pretty darn important. Frankly, I was pretty upset when I heard about this tremendous release of sediment into the Kalamazoo River, which already has tremendous impairments because of soil, because of the many counties it flows through before it gets to the Morrow Dam area. As my previous question in the previous half hour suggested, I think Eagle should be seeking a consent decree with the with the dam, with the energy company to provide grant funding, possibly through the local conservation district in Kalamazoo to manage that landscape more appropriately so that for the future there is less of that sediment to deal with behind the Morrow Dam and less chance of catastrophic release next time somebody thinks of that communicate without a permit is a good idea. I think I'll just stop there. Thank you for taking my statement tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, next person with their hand raised to make a comment is Lois Hicurt.
Yes, Jim, pretty good. My name is Lois Huchert. I'm the owner of Plainwell Kayak Company in Plainwell, Michigan. And my statement is for the, I have a concern about the safe and enjoyable recreation of the Kalamazoo River downstream of the Morrow Dam, not only in the future, but quite frankly, what had happened this summer, which was evidenced by the sediment that we saw in the river. And we really didn't know a lot about the safety. So I'd like to see some addition of verbiage in this permit to include making sure that the testing is done. It's a little scary that here we are in December and we still don't know how safe the sediment is. Because I want to make sure that the waters, the river bottom and the banks of the river are safe for the public to recreate in. And secondly, I want to make sure that the river is enjoyable to use without the sludge and sediment. You know, I don't have the technical terms here, but what we experienced as a lot of mud and adverse effects in terms of river clarity this summer was discouraging as a business owner trying to provide wonderful experiences for my customers on the river. So I just want to make that statement that there I know a lot of this is in the rears, but we have got to make sure that the responsible parties as well as Eagle, DNR, and EPA assure for the safety and the restoration of our river conditions to make sure it's enjoyable for the public.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm looking at my board and I am not seeing anyone at the moment with their hand raised. What I'd like to do right now is share again. I'll give everybody another chance. If you want to make a comment, go ahead and raise your hand. I've got up on the screen here, other ways to submit your comments. So if you don't get a chance to make your comment tonight or if you're comfortable with it, you can submit it in my waters. There's a link and Derek's gonna, Derek's gonna send an email out to all of you who registered. You know, we got your email addresses. So we'll follow up with you all with direct links to these things so you can access them directly after tonight's meeting. Okay, it looks like the person wants to make a comment. Laura Poucher. Laura, go ahead. Laura, if you can hear me, you got to.
Yes, can you hear me? This is Dave Poucher, her husband. I just have a question going the other way. We bought a house on Morrow Lake five years ago after the oil spill. We have been over a year now with no lake frontage, obviously, and it looks like it will probably never be what it was before. And I just wanted to know, I didn't know whether there was any anything we can do. I know eventually they're gonna put water back in here, but will it ever be the same or will we be able to kayak ever again?
Well, this isn't really a time for Q and A, but I'll tell you what, if you do have a question, you can send it over to to Derek. His email's up on my screen right now, so you can go ahead and send him a question. But do you have a comment?
I would just obviously like to see this get back to normal again and we'd really like to to be able to kayak and use the the water like it was before.
Okay, thank you, sir. Like I said, if people do have questions, you know, that didn't get answered today, you can send an email to Derek. His email's right there. And he'll be able to get back with you. Okay. Well, Derek, I'm looking at my board. Doesn't look like we have our hands raised, so I'm gonna bring it right on back up to you, Derek. So you there? And I guess you can read our closing statement and close us out for tonight.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, again, thanks for everybody for just attending, you know, taking time out of your evening. Appreciate the comments and cooperation of everybody. Appreciate the interest in the project. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you can submit additional written comments through December eleventh. Again, well, under the normal process, we would have to at least wait that long. We've already issued a permit here. But any additional comments can be sent to me. Email address Haroldson D at MI dot G O V or through the mywaters link. But if there's any questions that they did not get answered tonight, any follow-up, I'd be happy to follow up with folks on that. So the hearing is now closed. Thanks again for coming.
All right, thanks, Derek. Just a couple more small wrap-up items. There's again, there's contact information, so you can get ahold of him if you'd like to. I want to remind everybody that we did record tonight's meeting and will be placed on our YouTube channel in the next few days. Derek, I think you said you will be sending an email to everybody, right, with some follow-up details?
Yep, I'll get the follow-up email, which will have this, that will have this recording, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, if it's, you know, you go ahead and send it out and if we don't have it ready yet, we can send another one out, I guess, so.
Okay, we'll do, yep.
Yeah, so we'll get that out to you all that attended tonight. Yeah, a couple, say a couple of other questions came in after we kind of closed up the Q and A and I'll share those with Derek and Kyle as well. So if they need to get back to you, they can. All right, well, I want to thank everybody for spending some time with us this evening to learn about this project and to provide us with your comments. Very important part of our process. Kyle, are you there? Did you have anything last minute closing you want to bring up?
No, just to thank everybody again. I know this public hearing is a little different, just given the timeline of everything. But public participation is always appreciated, so thank you.
All right, well, thank, thank you, guys, and thank you all for joining us tonight. Hope you all have a great rest of your evening. Thank you.